You're ready, okay. Thank you. Good evening, everyone. Thank you for joining us here in Council Chambers. We do have some folks here with us. And thank you, of course, as always, to Kim in the BevCam booth for keeping us streaming lives so that people can watch at home or at your convenience. And so, Kim, thanks for being here with us. As we typically do, I will just talk through what's on the agenda before I call the meeting to order so that we can know what's before us. When we get started this evening, right at the top of our agenda, we have a resolution honoring our Senior of the Year, Anne Nato. Anne is here tonight, and I'm glad you could be here. And so, we'll get to that. Anne was, of course, honored at Senior Day in the Park this summer, but this is our chance to officially vote on our resolution. And so, it's really wonderful to be able to do that this evening and have Anne with us. We'll say more about how wonderful Anne is when we get to that part. Then we have some routine business to take care of. We'll take a brief break for some subcommittee work, and then we'll come back to finish everything up. So with that, I'll officially call to order this regular meeting of the Beverly City Council, Monday, September 15th, 2025, 7:00 PM. Ms. Kent, will you please call the roll?
Bowen.
Here.
Crowley.
Here.
Feldman.
Houseman.
Rattendo.
Spang.
St. Hilaire.
Sweeney.
Here.
And Flowers.
Here.
Thank you, Ms. Kent. Counselor Spang, will you lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance, please?
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Thank you very much, Counselor Spang. And one other celebration before we go right to our resolution. I wanted to mention that our city clerk, Lisa Kent, also has a new title when we're meeting today, and that is she's a new grandma, and she has a very cute new grandson, Logan Patrick, and he was born September 11th at 4:25 PM. Congratulations, Ms. Kent, to you and your family.
Thank you.
And he is truly very cute. Lisa didn't tell me to say that. He's objectively a very cute baby. So I'm going to go to the podium, counselors, to be able to do Order 226. This is our resolution for Senior of the Year, Anne Nato. And Anne, I'll invite you to join me there at the podium. So as I mentioned, this is our resolution in honor of Beverly's 2025 Senior of the Year, Anne Nato. And this resolution was presented to Anne as well at Senior Day in the Park, but of course, that happens during the summer recess. So one of the special things, I think, about our honoring of the Senior of the Year is that we get then to invite the senior to come and join us, and we get to celebrate that wonderful person all over again here in Council Chambers. So Anne, thank you. So I'm going to read this resolution, and I think for folks who know Anne and her family, then you already have a sense of why this is so well-deserved, but this will give us a little bit more of a chance to celebrate. A resolution in honor of Beverly's 2025 Senior of the Year, presented by the Beverly City Council, with great appreciation for the volunteerism, community-mindedness, and caring of our esteemed honoree. Whereas Anne Nato, better and affectionately known as Fred by her husband and close friends, a lifelong Beverly resident and current resident of Ward 6, as well as a proud Beverly Public Schools graduate, has been named this year's Beverly Senior of the Year. Whereas for over 20 years, Anne lovingly and generously gave back to the community that helped her to grow into the person she is, serving as a dedicated and caring paraprofessional in the Beverly Public Schools, a position through which she made a positive impact on countless students, families, and fellow educators and BPS staff members. And as an aside, Anne and I were just remembering that I first met her when my son Emmett started kindergarten at Hannah Elementary, and Anne was there as part of the team. Whereas Anne and her husband Lee, who is here with her this evening, first met working at the AMP Grocery Store in Beverly, and who together raised a wonderful daughter and celebrated their 49th wedding anniversary this summer. Congratulations to you both. Whereas Anne may be known as Anne or Fred to adults, but her favorite name by which she is known is Nan, the name by which she is called by her grandchildren when they chat with her, play with her, and when they happily attend what is lovingly known as Camp Nan in the summers, as they get lots of time with their Nan, and as Nan Anne entertains and cares for them with joy. Whereas Anne is known for her creativity, her hospitality, and her generous heart, not to mention her delicious cooking, all of which represent a beautiful tapestry of generations. Anne learned how to knit and how to bake apple pie from her grandmother, learned how to crochet from her mother, and then went on to teach her own daughter to sew. Whereas Anne is renowned for always having at least one, and usually more than one, craft project going on at any time, as well as for her delicious and well-known talent for cooking grilled cheese sandwiches with an iron. For those who arrive at Anne's house hungry, they can be sure a warm and delicious grilled cheese will be whipped up in short order. Whereas Anne is extremely generous with her time and skills, having volunteered as a Girl Scout troop leader, as well as giving of her time and talents regularly as an active member of her church, as well as driving friends to cancer treatments, lending a hand whenever and wherever it is needed, and always having an open door, heart, and ear to listen, and then to respond with thoughtful and wonderful advice and guidance. Whereas Anne is an active and engaged member of the Beverly Senior Center community, a joyful part of her regular exercise class, an active participant in the library reading group, a formidable challenger in the monthly Puzzle Palooza, a dedicated leader in the Endicott College Walking Club, a caring helper at the farm stand, and an overall helping hand for the many activities and events that offer so many connections to and for others at the Senior Center. Whereas Anne, with her generous spirit and caring heart, embodies in every way the idea of servant leadership. Anne is always ready to volunteer when and where she is needed, helping to build and strengthen a sense of community and communal care as she does so, while giving with her whole heart for its own sake, with nothing expected in return, and... Whereas Anne truly exhibits the community pride and caring, the sense of leadership and joy in sharing kindness and giving of herself in service to others that embodies true volunteerism and generosity of spirit. So now, therefore, be it resolved that the Beverly City Council does hereby congratulate, thank, and honor Beverly's 2025 Senior of the Year, Anne Nato, and wishes her much happiness, success, and good health, and orders that the city clerk spread a copy of this resolution upon the city records. Congratulations, Anne.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Of course, yeah, of course you would.
I just wanted to say thank you for the privilege and honor. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Anne. So Anne, you can take, this is your...
Okay. Thank you.
So our congratulations and thanks again to Anne for all of that. I think that encapsulates so much of what you do as a volunteer and also doesn't manage to capture it all. And so, thank you. And thank you certainly you and your family together also have just done so much. I was mentioning on my way in that Anne's husband, Mr. Nato, may be a familiar name to anyone who's seen a Beverly High School musical as a renowned set builder. And so, thank you to you both. What a joy to have you here with us. So, counselors, I would entertain a motion to officially approve Order 226. That is the resolution for our Senior of the Year, Anne Nato, that we just heard. All those in favor? That carries 9-0, and it's officially approved. Congratulations. I would entertain a motion for a 10-minute recess so that counselors can greet Anne and her family, and if they'd like to do any pictures, and then we'll come back and do some business. All those in favor? Thank you. That carries 9-0. We'll take a recess and be back.
28 Taft Avenue to serve on the zoning board of appeals.
Please refer that to the Committee on Legal Affairs.
Order number 218, approval of leases with Massachusetts Air and Space Museum.
Please refer that to the Committee on Legal Affairs as well. Let's go to communications from other city officers and boards, please.
Order number 219, Councilor Crowley, appointment for Stacy Rogers, 45 Sawyer Road, number two, to serve in the Open Space and Recreation Committee in Ward Three Council Representative. As Ward Three.
Please refer that to the Committee on Legal Affairs, and thank you, Councilor Crowley, for that.
Order number 220 from Councilor Rotendo and Councilor Crowley, a proposed ordinance amendment to City Ordinance 270-25, stop intersections to remove the stop signs at Kernwood Avenue, McPherson Drive, and River Street.
Thank you. Councilor Rotendo or Councilor Crowley, anything you'd like to say about this one before we refer it?
Thank you. I just wanted to just make, it's in direct response right now to the bridge traffic, as well as the new light signals that are going to be installed. The one on Kernwood in Bridge Street has now gone into operations, but it's going through its mode for the 30 days. And I know the one on River Street eventually will go in at some point. I know they're waiting for the KV line, so this is in response to that, that since the bridge was closed and the traffic pattern is changing.
Thank you. So we'll refer that to the Committee on Legal Affairs for further discussion.
Order number 221 from Brian Ailes, Finance Director, a request to approve the use of FY 2026 appropriated funds to pay prior year invoices in the amount of $11,195.68.
Please refer that to the Committee on Finance and Property.
Order 222 from Chief LaLacher, a request to approve storage of a boat at 353 Cabot Street per City Ordinance 270-97. This request cannot exceed one year, and all limits are set by the City Council.
Please refer that to the Committee on Legal Affairs as well. Let's go to communications, applications, and petitions, please.
Order number 223 from National Grid, petition 3111-3315, to install underground facilities on Tall Tree Drive.
Please refer that to the Committee on Public Services to set a public hearing.
Order number 224 from National Grid, petition 3117-5552, to install underground facilities on Cliff Street.
Please refer that to the Committee on Public Services to set a public hearing as well.
Order 225, notice of availability, Phase Four Status Report and its build construction report, potential source location, 10, former variance site at 150 Sawyer Road.
I would entertain a motion to receive this and place it on file. All those in favor?
Aye.
That carries nine zero, and we'll receive that report and place it on file. I would entertain a motion to take a brief break for some committee work. All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. That's nine zero, so we'll take a break to do committee work now. Let's have Finance and Property stay here in council chambers, Legal Affairs in the committee room, and Public Services in the hall, please. Thank you.
Call to order the Committee on Finance and Property, so good evening, colleagues. Looks like we have two items tonight, Order 216 and Order 221, both which refer to us tonight. Not sure we have anyone here to talk about these, but the first is a gift from UMass Lowell Digital Equity Partnership, gifting four one desktop computers to the Beverly Public Library, as well as 18 ChromaVoe licenses for the library's Chromebooks. Do I have any questions or comments, colleagues? If not, I would entertain a motion that we approve this gift. So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
It is approved, three to zero. Okay, separately, we have Order 221 from Mr. Ailes. I'm going to hold this one, I think, for the next meeting, if that's okay. I don't know if there's a timeline as to it, but I had some questions, and I don't see Mr. Ailes here.
Yeah, if you have questions, I know that talking to the...
Oh, Ms. Kent, will you unmute?
I'm not sure if this is time-sensitive. I thought it was, just to talking to the auditors, but I'm... I mean, it's your obligation.
Well, I'm also comfortable approving these and taking my questions offline, because I don't think it's going to affect the outcome. I just had some general questions on process, but small dollar amounts, and we typically approve these sorts of finance requests. So I don't know if anyone else has questions or comments on it at all?
I'll just say, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I am fine approving them if they are time-sensitive. There was nothing that seemed overwhelmingly alarming, but I agree with you in that I think it's helpful for us to have the ability to ask these questions and have them answered during the meeting when we're considering them, especially because I, if possible, want to discourage approving prior year invoices if it can be avoided. I don't want it to just be a regular practice that we rubber stamp. But if there is concerns about time sensitivity, and I know obviously extenuating circumstances, then in this case, I'm fine approving it.
Madam President, do you have any comments or concerns about approving this?
Thank you. I, like you both, have stated, I think the dollar amount is small, and particularly if it needs to be approved for a time-sensitive reason, I'm comfortable approving it. Similar to, I think, what you had both articulated, I can understand and see that sometimes, I think, invoices may come to us in a delayed fashion. Twenty-five individual invoices felt like a bigger number than we sometimes see, so my question, too, was just, would have been about process and...
Well, I will do this. I will follow up with Mr. Perry and Mr. Ailes offline. I would suggest we go ahead and approve this. It is routine business that we do typically see, so if you guys are comfortable with that, I move to approve Order Number 221.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
That is approved, three to zero. Okay, that is all the business before us tonight. Any other comments or questions?
Thank you.
All right. I would entertain a motion to adjourn the Committee on Finance and Property. So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
We're adjourned.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you very much, everyone. I'll call the full council back to order after our subcommittee break, and thank you to our subcommittees for the work done during that time. And we will go, then, to reports from committees. Ms. Kent?
Order number 196, the Committee on Public Services. To whom refer the matter regarding a reappointment for Joyce Facello to serve on the David Lynch Park trustees, have considered said matter and beg leave to follow. Council approves this reappointment.
Are there questions or comments? Question comes on the acceptance of the proposal and the adoption of the order. All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
That carries nine zero.
Order number 197, the Committee on Public Services, to whom refer the matter regarding a reappointment for Mark Flag to serve on the David Lynch Public Park trustees, have considered said matter and beg leave to follow. Recommend the council approve this reappointment.
Questions or comments? Question comes on the acceptance of the proposal and adoption of the order. All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
That carries nine zero as well.
Order number 198, the Committee on Public Services, to whom refer the matter regarding a reappointment for Kathy Doan to serve on the David Lynch Park, Public Park trustees, have considered said matter and beg leave to follow. Recommend the council approve this reappointment.
Questions or comments? Question comes on the acceptance of the proposal and adoption of the order. All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
That carries nine zero.
Order 199, Committee on Public Services, to whom refer the matter regarding a reappointment for Nancy Mourinho to serve on the Permanent Building Commission, have considered said matter and beg leave to follow. Recommend the council approve this reappointment.
Questions or comments? Question comes on the acceptance of the proposal and adoption of the order. All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
That carries nine zero.
Order number 212, the Committee on Public Services, to whom refer the matter regarding a National Grid petition for West Diane Street, have considered said matter and beg leave to follow. To set a public hearing on October 6th at 7:30 p.m.
Are there questions or comments? I would entertain a motion to approve the recommendation to set that public hearing for our next regular meeting, October 6th at 7:30 p.m. What... I'm sorry. All those in favor?
Aye.
That carries nine zero.
Order number 224, the Committee on Public Services, to whom refer the matter regarding petition 3117552, to install underground facilities on Cliff Street, have considered said matter and beg leave to follow. Set a public hearing on October 6th at 7:40 p.m.
Are there questions or comments on that one? I would entertain a motion to set that public hearing as recommended by the subcommittee for October 6th at 7:40 p.m. All those in favor?
Aye.
That carries nine zero. Thank you.
Order number 216, the Committee on Finance and Property, to whom refer the matter regarding the University of Massachusetts Lowell Digital Equity Partnership, would like to gift the Beverly Public Library four all-in-one desktop computers and 18 ChromaVoe licenses for the library's Chromebooks, have considered said matter and beg leave to follow. Recommend the council approve this request.
Questions or comments? Question comes on the acceptance of the proposal and adoption of the order. All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
That carries nine zero.
Yeah, Order 221 should be submitted.
Yeah.
So it's probably in this file. I'll go back to it.
Order number 217, the Committee on Legal Affairs, to whom refer the matter regarding Michael Barone Jr., 28 Taft Avenue, to serve on the zoning board of appeals, have considered said matter and beg leave to follow. Recommend the council approve this reappointment.
Questions or comments? Question comes on the acceptance of the proposal and adoption of the order. All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Carries nine zero.
Order number 221, Committee on Legal Affairs, to whom refer the matter regarding a request to approve the use of... Oh, no, I'm sorry. Order number 221, the Committee on Finance and Property, a request to approve the use of FY 2026 appropriated funds to pay prior year invoices in the amount of $11,195.68, have considered said matter and beg leave to follow. Recommend the council approve this request.
Are there questions or comments on this one? Question comes on the acceptance of the proposal and adoption of the order. All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Carries nine zero.
Order number 206, Committee on Legal Affairs, to whom refer the matter regarding a proposed amendment to Ordinance 27049, handicap parking at 25 and 1/2 Atlantic Avenue, I mean Atlantic Street and 17 Orchard Street, have considered said matter and beg leave to follow. Submit the accompanying amended ordinances and recommend its adoption pending publication and final passage. The first reading will be tonight.
Thank you.
Order number 194, the Committee on Legal Affairs, to whom refer the matter regarding an appointment for Joanna Murphy Scott to serve on the Design Review Board, have considered said matter and beg leave to follow. Recommend the council approve this appointment.
Questions or comments? Question comes on the acceptance of the proposal and adoption of the order. All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
That carries nine zero.
Order number 195, the Committee on Legal Affairs, to whom refer the matter regarding an appointment for Emily Hutchings to serve on the Design Review Board as Historic District Commission Representative, have considered said matter and beg leave to follow. Recommend the council approve this appointment.
Questions or comments? Question comes on the acceptance of the proposal and adoption of the order. All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
That carries nine zero.
Order 200, the Committee on Legal Affairs, to whom refer the matter regarding a reappointment for Wayne Miller to the Open Space and Recreation Committee Planning Board Representative, have considered said matter and beg leave to follow. Recommend the council approve this reappointment.
Questions or comments? Question comes on the acceptance of the proposal and adoption of the order. All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
That carries nine zero.
Order number 219, the Committee on Legal Affairs, to whom refer the matter regarding an appointment for Stacy Rogers, 45 Sawyer Road, number two, to serve on the Open Space and Recreation Committee as Ward Three Council Representative, have considered said matter and beg leave to follow. Recommend the council approve this appointment.
Questions or comments? Question comes on the acceptance of the proposal and adoption of the order. All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
That carries nine zero.
Order number 218, the Committee on Legal Affairs, to whom refer the matter regarding an approval of leases with Massachusetts Air and Space Museum, have considered said matter and beg leave to follow. Recommend the council approve the re-prints.
Questions or comments on this one? Question comes on the acceptance of the proposal and adoption of the order. All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
That carries nine zero, and our thanks to our airport director, Mr. Gabe Hannafin, for being here with us this evening. Thank you, Mr. Hannafin.
Order number 220, the Committee on Legal Affairs, to whom refer the matter regarding a proposed ordinance amendment to City Ordinance 270-25, stop intersections to remove the stop signs at Kernwood Avenue, McPherson Drive, and River Street, have considered said matter and beg leave to follow. Submit the accompanying amended ordinance and recommend its adoption pending publication and final passage. And this will need to be read.
At 10:06, we'll have its first reading?
Yep, okay. Order number 222, the Committee on Legal Affairs, to whom refer the matter regarding a request to approve storage of a boat at 353 Cabot Street per City Ordinance 270-97. This request... This request cannot exceed one year, and all limits are set by the City Council. Have considered said matter and beg leave to follow. Recommend the council approve this request.
Questions or comments? Question comes on the acceptance of the proposal and adoption of the order. All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
That carries nine zero. That's it for committees. Thank you. I wanted to mention that before we go to... As Ms. Kent mentioned, we have one item under motions and orders. That's order 206, that can have its first reading and first vote this evening. It was just reported out from Subcommittee from Legal Affairs. But I also wanted to mention that order 220, which is a proposed ordinance amendment that was received this evening from Council Lieutenant and Councilor Crowley. Councilors, you may have already seen, but Ms. Nguyen, our Planning Director, forwarded to our attention the recommendation from the Parking and Traffic Commission recommending or supporting this change. And so, Ms. Kent will add that to the order. It'll be attached. I just wanted to mention that it had been received by the council. Thank you, Ms. Kent, and thank you to Ms. Nguyen and our Parking and Traffic Commission for sending us that feedback as well. So we do have, under motions and orders, order 206. This is available this evening for its official first reading and first vote. And Ms. Kent, we'll go to you.
Order number 206, 2025, proposed amendment to A, Section 270-49, off-street parking, handicap parking. C, handicap parking in the following locations. Spaces should be reserved for handicap parking. The name of the street is Atlantic Street and Orchard Street. Location, Atlantic Street South at approximately 25.5 Atlantic Street, Orchard Street East at approximately 17 Orchard Street. And this was in the newspaper on September 19th.
Thank you, Ms. Kent. Councilor Spang, Councilor Housman, this is your proposed ordinance amendment. Is there anything either of you wanted to mention at this point? Councilor Housman?
I would just say that Councilor Spang and I, both on our respective proposals, worked with Sergeant Nicholson and with the Solicitor's Office in terms of review and approval of this. So it's been fully vetted by city staff and police department.
Thank you. And thank you, councilors, for your work... Both of your words on these different proposals. Are there any questions or comments at this time?
I just have an edit on my... It was not in the newspaper on the 19th. I was going to put in there, but it was on Friday, the 12th. Thank you. On Friday, just for the minutes.
Thank you. So I would entertain a motion to approve for a first vote, order 206. All those in favor?
Aye.
That carries nine zero. And so, order 206 will be available for second vote and final passage at our next regular meeting on October 6th. So we will have the chance to do that at that point. That brings us to the end of our agenda for this evening. Councilors, are there any announcements or reminders that you would like to share at this point? Okay? Well, I will add a word of thanks also to our City Solicitor, Beth Oldmixon, for being here with us this evening. Thank you, Solicitor. And again, thanks to Kim in the Bev Cam booth. Thanks to those who came and joined us. We had some of our... Some of those many names that we just heard for appointments and reappointments. There were folks here this evening, meeting in Subcommittee for those appointments. And we thank not only them for joining us, but I was struck by the number of appointments that we were able to approve this evening. And just a collective word of thanks to all of those who are willing to serve on the many boards and commissions that make our city run well and contribute to the work of the city. And for those who are being reappointed, thank you for continuing to serve as well. Ms. Kent?
I just want to remind people that we do not have a preliminary election in September, because we had some calls this week thinking we do, because Salem's is tomorrow and Boston's was last week. But we do not have an election. We don't have early voting until the November election.
Thank you, Ms. Kent. Good reminder and good clarification for Beverly residents. With that, I would entertain a motion to adjourn. All those in favor?
Aye.
That carries nine zero. Thank you, everyone. Good night. We're adjourned.